Special budget hearing meeting and we have five members present. So if there's somebody that would like to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes 5-0. Dr. Cobb's.
Alright, so a couple of things. If we could look at more one minute first.
Soon. One of the things to remember with this is that this is not the actual budget for our district, right? And I think I've said this to everybody a hundred times in the last two years. This is an estimated guideline to our authority to spend. So we won't know what our actual budget is until after September 20th and then the auditor comes in and finalizes what that budget is. But this is, um, this is what we publish in order to be able to begin to spend those monies that, that come in. So the reason that I bring this up is that this gives you an indication of how our budget is derived. So you start adding numbers and it equates to total FTE. So all of the numbers that you see over there on the side, on the right-hand column, equate to numbers of students and then it is multiplied by what used to be called base state aid per pupil, but I think is now foundational aid. And you wind up with a total budget number. Okay, so this is the document that Terry goes through to determine what our spending authority is. Again, the numbers in this document are estimates because we don't know what they are yet. So some of those estimates are high to guarantee that we don't have to republish the budget when, if numbers come in higher than what, what we anticipated. So this is in essence, an estimate of what we're looking at. If you would look at budget at a glance for me. Um, so as you scroll down, I just wanted to note a couple of things because oftentimes we talk about, um, the, the amount of money that we spend per pupil. So one of the things that I want to, to identify, if you scroll back up to that, that column, there you go, is that our actual budget in 2018, 19 was just, uh, for instruction was just under 18.6 million dollars. The budget projections for this year are just under 20 million dollars. Okay, so again, that is indicative of new dollars coming into education. It is also indicative of a higher rate to give us spending authority. Alright, so that does not mean that we have 1.2 million dollars of new money going into education. Means we have the authority to spend it if it happens to be that high, uh, which it won't be. Uh, but you can see the, the increases. You, you can also see here about the amount we spend per pupil. So last year, just over 14,000 dollars spent per pupil. This year, that estimated cost is about 15,000 dollars. Again, it won't be that high, um, when the, when the finals num, final numbers play out. But you can begin to see how the budget process works. If we go back and look at, um, the other document there, which is code 99, this is the notice of hearing. This gives you the actual budgetary information. So the general fund expenditures proposed in, in 1920 are about, uh, 17.3 million dollars with your LOB being just over 5 million dollars and you can see the other budgetary items that are listed there. In essence, this is our budget as it is proposed. Again, that budget is an estimate and a legal maximum authority to spend, not the actual dollars that we will be spending in any of those areas. Any questions about our budget?
And we won't know really how any of these numbers will change until after September 20th.
So we'll have September 20th and that'll give us our actual count day. And then even after that, there will be an audit that takes place that, that manipulates and changes those numbers somewhat. So, um, uh, numbers are kind of finicky in terms of the budget process depending on what we identify as, as, you know, CTE numbers, for example. We identify a certain thing, they'll come in and audit it. There is no doubt that we will be off two or three or four students, um, even though we do our best. But depending on when students move in and move out, um, always impacts that overall budget. So it won't be until the audit actually comes in that we will know our budget precisely. But yes, after September 20th, we'll have a much better idea of where we really fall within it.
Do we have any questions from our district patrons that are watching this evening?
Look at all these people.
I know.
We got a whole gaggle of people over here.
Alright. Is there a motion at this time to approve, uh, the legal maximal spending authority as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes 6-0. And Terry, you might note that we now have six board members present. Thank you, Dr. Cobb's. Alright. If somebody would like to adjourn the meeting, this special session, it has, all topics have been covered.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that also passes 6-0. Thank you. Alright, we have about nine minutes. Alright, good evening, everyone. It is seven o'clock. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting tonight on August the 12th. We call this meeting to order. We have seven board members present. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If somebody would like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0. We move on to consent agenda. Dr. Cobb's, anything you need to point out to us?
No, the only thing to remember here is within the surplus tech items, um, that we still have some, some things with, um, some life expectancy to them, just not for the purpose in which we intend them to be. So they would be sold to district personnel and then opened up to the public after that.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That also passes 7-0. Uh, we do not have any comments from the public this evening, so we will move on to reports and presentations. We have the ORC refinance, um, and Mr. Avi will present a, a plan for the ORC bonds. I hope I said your last name right.
You did, yes.
Alright.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. Good to see everyone again. Um, again, Dustin Navy with Piper Jaffrey. I will be brief, uh, but wanted to provide an outline and adapt it with related to potential refinancing of the ORC, uh, transaction that was completed in 2010 for the construction of the recreation facility. This is strictly a savings opportunity, only just substituting, um, old interest rates with new interest rates and then obviously realizing a savings. And as you're well aware, the, um, these obligations are paid for by the rec, um, rec commission, millevy. So, uh, this really is benefiting the ORC in their, in their operations. From a interest rate perspective, obviously, we are, um, in a very favorable environment. And on a couple of pages after the front, you'll see a couple of interest rate charts that I think you'll be very interested in. And, um, rates are, are very, very close to where they were, um, here at record lows at the end of 2017. And you can see from that chart, rates have been higher than their current levels 97% of the time since 1987. So we've kind of been on this whirlwind of, of rate volatility and we are nearing, um, record lows once again, which is obviously a very good opportune time for considering the, the ORC refinancing. Uh, tab number one, um, shows just the existing obligations and what's being refinanced and the rate that the current obligations are outstanding at. And, uh, you'll see that the rates are outstanding from a 3.375% to a 4.375%. Again, we're just doing interest rate substitution on kind of get into what some of those projections look like. Two more pages back, you'll see what's called the savings page. In savings, um, we've, savings has ranged anywhere from a $68,000 of total savings to over 100,000 of annual savings. And it really will just depend on what the final results of the process is and maybe a little bit about that process. So, um, tomorrow, we will distribute a term sheet, a request for proposals to 50-plus banks, um, not only in Kansas, but in the region and also include the local banks. And, um, we will expect to receive proposals, um, or bids back from those banks within two weeks. And once we get those proposals back, we'll do some evaluation, determine which bank provided the best terms to the school district and the ORC. And then at that point, we'll make a recommendation to proceed with that bank. If for some reason, the proposals received, um, do not provide sufficient savings to go forward, there's no cost incurred by the school district or, or the ORC for this process. Um, so we'll just, you know, again, we'll, we'll get bids, we'll review the bids and then to determine at that point if we're proceeding or not. Again, we've, we've seen, um, savings range kind of all over the board from the 70,000 dollar range to over 100,000 dollar range, um, which again is, is a good result for, um, the district and the ORC. So that's the process. Once we decide if we're proceeding or not, we will come back to the board with a final recommendation and a formal, um, uh, resolution for the board to adopt at the September meeting. And that will ratify the process to proceed towards closing and the refinancing of the transaction, which we close on October 1st. The, um, the projected, and the next page, you'll see a couple of different items I want to, I do want to point out real quick. The average rate of the current obligations is a 4.19%, which is, um, you know, average coupon refund bonds. And you'll see what's called true interest cost. That's 2.65%. So the, the 68,000 dollars of savings is net of all estimated costs and, and as a result of a 2.65% interest rate, um, on the remaining, uh, life of the obligation. And the one thing we look at just from a metrics perspective, we see the second last line, it says, um, present value savings percentage is 6.26%. Oftentimes, from a, uh, standard perspective, we like to see anywhere between 3 and 5% present value savings at a minimum. So obviously, at this current level, we're, we're in excess of that benchmark. Flipping over to section number two, again, really just a calendar of events, I'm sorry, yeah, but the next page, I'm sorry. The next page shows the, the, um, the source and uses of funds. So we talked about the cost of issuance. We expect the cost of issuance in this transaction to be right around 30,000 dollars. And again, the, the 68,000 dollars of savings is net of all the expenses. So that's, that's actual savings to the district and to the ORC for, for completing the transaction. And then number, tab number two, again, just looking at a timeline and calendar events. And as you can see, as, as I mentioned before, we'll be distributing the requests for proposals. We'll get terms back from the local banks here, or, um, banks, uh, towards the end of this month and we'll select a bank at that time. And then we'll proceed with the documentation for formal approval by the, um, school board at the September 9th meeting and then working towards closing and the refinancing on October 1st. Lastly, and again, this is more just for your information, and I know, um, Dr. Cobb just went through the budget information. So we do a lot of evaluation and work on the bond side of things too. And, and I thought it'd be helpful just to have a leave behind, um, just to go ahead and give you an updated analysis on where the district stands as it relates to the bond and interest millevy. And as I've told, um, Terry and Dr. Cobb's before the meeting, you're, the district's in a very, very good financial position as it relates to the bond fund, um, which I think will afford the district a lot of flexibility in future years, whether that's millevy, um, management options, whether that's, that's, um, debt retirement before, um, before you originally thought. I just think there's going to be a lot of, um, a lot of options the district has at its disposal in the next few years and will obviously update this and continue to do so on an annual basis for, for budget purposes. But just kind of gives you some perspective, obviously state aid's a big component you've heard about before. Current state aid on bonds is 51%, which is very, very strong. If, if these were, um, bonds that had been authorized by voters after July 1 of, of 2015, uh, you'd be getting a much lesser percent paid for by the state. So the timing was very, very good. And then lastly, again, from a, just a millevy perspective, we see the very last tab, which just shows the millevy analysis, um, which is actually one more page down. Again, looking at your existing mills and I believe the 19-point, um, 19.89 mills was what was in the, the budget that was just adopted by the school board. And again, I think it's, um, it just, it goes to show that the, now I see Terry and Dr. Cobb's have done a fabulous job of managing this fund, um, and providing the, the options, future options for the school board to consider as it relates to, uh, managing the overall district millevy. So again, just more of, more of a leave behind and just an assessment of where you are currently, based upon current budget information. So with that, I'm glad to answer any questions about that information or the refinancing. And we also have, um, Tyler Ellsworth from Bond Counsel here, um, the district's bond attorney, to answer any questions related to the resolution that's, um, before the board this evening.
Does anyone have any questions? I do, I want to clarify. So what we're voting on tonight is just, um, for you all to go out and, and get additional information on what these rates would be to see if we should proceed with this refinance. Is that correct?
Yes, that's great to say. It's a resolution of intent, there's nothing binding to it. It's just permission to go through the process to, to figure out what rates we could get through a bidding process.
Okay.
Yep, good question.
Thank you. Any other questions before we ask for a motion to accept this?
I think it's important to note here that this process is, is really has little to do with USD 290 and the most to do with, with the ORC. We hold the bonds and we distribute funds in and out, but it really is not our purview. And in conversations with the Ottawa Recreation Commission, this is a, an opportunity that they would like to pursue and take a look at, uh, at what options are available to them. So I think it's important to recognize what our role is here, helping Ottawa Recreation Commission be good stewards of tax dollars and do the best they can for our community.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Cobb's. Is there a motion to approve the resolution, resolution of intent for lease purchase?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
You do as well.
Would also just like to add there, is that he talked about, um, credit to myself and Terry for the, the use of bond funds and the, the process. I'm going to take zero credit on that and I think that we should all give the credit where credit is due. Terry George is fantastic financial mind in taking care of our district.
Alright, so next up, um, is the lifetime achievement award information for Mrs. Tharp. Who is presenting that?
I'll present, me and Mrs. Whitaker will present.
Wonderful.
So just so you know, I shared, um, shared the letters with you as a board. I put them in, in the, um, secret section so that they're not public because we are talking about personnel in terms of, of what they say. But in January, Mrs. Whitaker and I decided that, um, we had an opportunity to recognize the work of somebody that has given a great deal to our district and done so many things for us. And so we put together some letters and, uh, talked to some students, did a lot of different things to, um, to recommend Stella Tharp for the KACTE Lifetime Achievement Award. And to be honest with you, we both kind of forgot about it, I think, until June when Stella called me into her office and said, "Hey, did you send a letter to somebody?" And I said, "No, I don't know what you're talking about." And then it dawned, I think on both of us, "Oh, yeah, we did." And we were pleasantly surprised that Stella was recognized as the KACTE Lifetime Achievement Award for all of her efforts over the course of many years, not only to our district, but to career and technical education and the students and youth of Ottawa and USD 290. So we wanted to take the opportunity and congratulate Mrs. Tharp on this award. She has earned it time and time and time again. I can't think of a teacher that has given more to our district and to our students than Mrs. Tharp has. She epitomizes gratitude to be a teacher. She has so many great things to contribute and I may have to work for us to write and ask her to support the gratitude.
You know what makes life really good is when you come to a meeting and you see one of your former students who's employed by USD 290, serving on the ORC board. I mean, but, um, I would just like to thank this board for giving students at Ottawa High School the opportunity to have the kind of programming that they have. Dr. Cobb's and I have talked a lot about where we're at today. We still have a ways to go. We're going to get there someday. And, um, I truly appreciate both, um, the entire administrative staff here at Central Office and, um, a principal that has just really rocked our high school and made it a really good place to work. So thank you all very much and I appreciate it.
Okay, we are going to move on to the PLC framework. Mrs. Bybee. And we will be taking action on this after she presents it tonight.
Well, with the, uh, addition of our PLC days on Fridays, we felt like it was important to have a structure to that PLC because this is important, uh, an important opportunity for our staff to be able to have that collaborative time together. So, um, with this framework, we have a structure that goes along with that. And, um, it was presented to our staff today, uh, just kind of an overview and then we'll, um, administrators will go through it a little bit more thoroughly, um, as they're doing their work within their buildings. But we're very excited about having this framework. We're very excited about the topics that we'll be covering this year. We have a lot on our plate, so it's important for us to make sure that we're using this professional learning time, um, in a structured way, in a systematic way, so that we can make the changes that we want to make in moving forward.
And remember, this was presented
Yes.
Last time we met, we're taking action to make it policy, I guess, for lack of a better word.
Yeah, any questions, since you've had more of an opportunity to take a look at it?
Did last time, um, I'm sorry, let me, I'll get this out so you can hear me as if you can't hear me. Okay? Help me understand why the board is approving this, is just to support you? I mean, isn't this administrator function? I guess the only-
Much like the rest of the frameworks, the purpose behind having the board approve it is that all of our staff recognize that the board is in support of the initiatives that we have and that we can identify on the document that the board has seen it, approved it, and, and support it and its promotion again with our staff.
Okay.
That's why.
And have they had opportunity to dialogue with this?
Staff?
Well, administration, whoever.
Oh, administration, yes. Absolutely.
Very good.
Yep.
I just was wondering, you know, I mean-
Actually, this came out of, uh, our work that we, this summer, when we went to our PLC Institute
Okay.
Um, as administrators, and this is the work that came out of, of our-
Excellent.
Learning there.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the, the framework as presented?
Madam President, I move that we approve the, uh, framework for professional learning community.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Mrs. Bybee.
Thank you.
Mr. Gurrell is going to speak with us on security.
We're gonna, we're gonna do a very high-level overview of the security programs at USD 290 and what's going to change. I do have to apologize, this was all put together probably like two weeks ago and since then, a lot of stuff has changed already nearby. Namely, we have had two large school districts just north of us, very, very large school districts that are currently fighting ransomware attacks. One of those school districts, we've been talking to pretty closely and they currently have COT set up in their district office and they're sleeping, or their technology office, because they have a separate technology office, because they're that large. And they are spending the night there and working there every day since Friday. So it's a good time to talk about this and what this means to us. I did have the privilege of going to, I was invited to a Missouri Tech Directors Conference, um, this, this summer. And while there, it was very apparent that Missouri and Kansas have a conflicting view on what security means. And I say this very lightly, even though I'm being recorded and someone might see this from KSDE, uh, but the Missouri Department of Education very tightly monitors and is concerned about data security in schools, whereas Kansas is very much physical security. And I say that because there are grant dollars available to us that we can use to purchase surveillance, access control, these sorts of things from the state, um, which came out right after we finished our bond project, so we haven't spent any of those dollars at all. But Missouri has the same incentives for their school districts, but they're all data security focused. The school that we were in, in Missouri, didn't have a working camera system and it wasn't a priority for them. None of their doors had access control. They have unlocked doors, they didn't care. That's not the case for every school, I understand that, but it's pretty common in Kansas to see those access control doors and plenty of security cameras. So just an interesting perspective from one school to the next. Real quick, this means nothing to anybody in the room, but I'm going to explain it the best I can. We turned on a brand-new Linux server at 7:30 in the morning and this is a log. It's a script that watches who accesses the server and what they're doing. And at 8:19, we received our first hit from a German IP address. There is no need for a German IP address to access a server we just turned on. All of these IP addresses on the far right-hand side, very hard to see, I apologize, are from different countries. You'll see the bottom five are from China. After we get five hits, we ban the IP address, they can no longer talk to our systems. This, the first ban was the next morning at 3:52 in the morning. So we had, all we had done was turn the server on, configured it, configured this important piece of software right here that watches for these attacks and same day, we had issues. So that's the, that's the landscape of these threats today and that's how important it is to be in front of this. And it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. This is an alarming map. This is the number of cybersecurity-related incidents since 2016. And this is only the reported incidents. There are so many, and this is schools only, sorry, public schools only, um, 512 since 2016, and this is not all-encompassing by any means, it's just the ones that have been reported. And there's a company or an organization called K-12 Cyber Secure that tracks all of these. And you can go to their website, ktwcybersecure.org, and read about every single one of these incidents. As we zoom in and look at Kansas, this tells us we're doing a great job. What, and that's what you think, but that's not what the case is. It just means that no one's reporting them. It's very quiet. We have had a cyber incident, it's not up there. Ours was small in comparison to everything else that is up there, but we have had a cyber incident. I would bet there are tons, tons in Kansas that have not been reported. This map should be peppered with little dots. What we don't want to do is add a big dot there that says Ottawa, Kansas. So what are we doing? The Center for Infra, or for Internet Security provides us external scans for free. Um, we, we don't pay for the service, 100% free. They scan all of our IP addresses every month and let us know what might be happening, what's out of date. We also get alerts on who potential attackers could be and we can block them and take action. We also do host-based AV scans, which is just antivirus on servers. We do automated patching and updates. If there is a security update released from Microsoft, it is applied immediately to our servers with zero human intervention. We don't care. If it's a security patch from Microsoft, we're getting it. We have data sharing agreements in place between us and third-party vendors. And it's kind of interesting when we call in to do these data sharing agreements to these companies, they say, "Oh, are you from Texas?" And we say, "No, we're from Kansas." And they say, "We don't have Kansas schools doing this." So we're ahead of the curve in that, in that aspect. Texas is huge on this. They have state legislation that requires this. And if you look deep enough, Kansas does too, but no one really looks at it. So we're going to do it until we're told otherwise. We also do vendor hosting assessments where we actually ask them to fill out a rubric and grade their hosting infrastructure. If it's secure enough for us, it's secure enough for them, it's good for our kids. We have had people fail our, our, our hosting assessments and we don't do business with them. We say, "We're not going to allow this app or extension because of this failure on this hosting assessment." The Center for Internet Security also provides us, uh, several hundred pages for every operating system that we use and it's called a security hardening, hardening benchmark. We hit these benchmarks as often as possible. Sometimes they are extremely restrictive and I kid you not when I say setting up a server is a 400-page document. What to do, step one, step two, step three. It is a long process. And we'll keep going. What else are we doing? So that's not it. We have tons more that we do. The big push we have right now is moving to SSL everywhere. And that is basically encrypting all communications between us and any third-party or our students internally in our buildings. Everything on our network is SSL encrypted almost now. Why is that important? Let's go forward a little bit and come back. So this is a third-party company that will look at your SSL certificate. Again, all this is, is encryption. We're basically just encoding something, sending it, they're decoding it, and in transmission, it can't be intercepted and used against us. Schools that don't use SSL, they are out there. You can get on their network with the right tools and see everything they send in plain text. Social security numbers, date of birth, grades, student PII, stuff we should not be seeing. So we use SSL everywhere. So if you look at our report for Skyward's web, for the Skyward website that we have hosted elsewhere, it is our SSL certificate. We got an A. Uh, if you look at KSDEs, they got a C. Now-
That's not surprising.
Prioritization- Prioritization of these security initiatives. I'm going to step back just a little bit. We are also doing what's called LAPS on all of our workstations, local administrator password solution. And what that means is I don't know the passwords for any of our computers anymore, I don't have them. No one in our department knows them, we don't have them, we cannot access, we can't access them. If we need them, we can get to them, but they randomize every two days. Every single computer in our district has a different local administrator password every two days and it's like 15 characters and it's automated, it's done. If we need to get to a computer, we have a piece of software that we can run with our credentials and we put in the computer name and it says, "Here's your password, it expires in two more days, have at it." The reason for this is that's how these attacks spread. They propagate through your network through the same credentials. If they have one credential that they've hacked or they have, they have a hash of the password, they can use that hash in what's called a pass-the-hash attack and use it on every single machine they see and they're in. They don't even have to have a plain text password, they can have an encrypted version of your password and get from Windows machine to Windows machine to Windows machine and take everything with them along the way. And it's super scary and it keeps me awake at night. We also have what's called honey pots. We actually put stuff out there for people to find and we direct them to that, so we make it easy for them to find. And as they look at it, we block their IP addresses. So, kind of just slap their hand for getting in the honey jar. And it works, we ban IP addresses by the dozens every single day. Our next step, which we'll get to in a minute, but I'm going to talk about it right now because it fits great in this slide, we are getting a next-generation firewall. It's just an industry lingo term for a new firewall that's fancy. And what it allows us to do is do geolocation-based IP blocking. So, we can say Russian IP addresses cannot get in our network and that's just a blanket statement, it knows all the Russian IP addresses and that's it, it's done. We can do the same for any country and we're going to do a lot of that because there's no need currently for a German IP address to hit our network. We will have all kinds of scenarios where a teacher wants to talk to another classroom in Germany, let's say again. We can allow that on a case-by-case basis and we certainly will, but day-to-day, there's no reason for it to be open because that's where these attacks come from, is other countries. We do regular phishing scenarios, I think you've all seen those, maybe even clicked on a few of them. We continue to do those because they are fun and that is the attack vector. The school that got hit north of here, one of them, we are 90% sure it was an email attack because that's what they always are. If you saw, I think it was Truman Medical Center got hit Friday or Saturday, email was the attack vector. So, when these emails come in, all someone has to do is click on that email and someone can get in and start encrypting stuff and it spreads from one computer to the next, to the next, to the next. And the main thing these guys do that do these attacks is when they're in one email, they grab the entire contact list and send the attack to all of those people again. So, now, once you have one person in our school district that gets it, let's say Dr. Cobb's, you'd never click on it, I know, but if Dr. Cobb's clicked the email, then it sends an email out from his account to everyone in the district and says, "Hey, I'm Dr. Cobb's, click this message." And people do. These attackers prey on urgency and they prey on emergencies, they prey on curiosity, "Please click this, hey, look what I caught you doing." And there's a link, you're like, "Well, what did I do?" And you click it and there you go. It's scary, all the ways they think about getting in and they spend more time thinking about getting in than we spend thinking about keeping them out. And that's super scary. Is it enough, everything we're doing? No, not even close. We are installing a new piece of software, it's called the Security Onion. And if you think of security like an onion, it all starts to make sense, there's layers. There's no one tool you can put in there that says, "Hey, we're secure, that's it." So, the Security Onion is multiple tools, we're not going to go into what all these tools are and what they do, but just know, there's like 15 tools that do all of these sorts of protections, they analyze live log, log events and they aggregate all of this information and make it actionable for us. Because when we have 45 different servers that are visible outside of our network, I can't just sit there and make sure all of them are secure. So, this tool does that for us, alerts us on abnormal conditions and a lot of other things. What else are we planning? So, we talked about the next-gen firewall, we also are developing our first disaster recovery plan and our first business continuity plan. Disaster recovery being how do we get, how do we stop the bleeding? How do we get everything back up and running? How do we keep kids learning? And then, that's business continuity. Disaster recovery is getting the lights back on. How do we make sure our servers come back up? How do we have people in the places they need to be to get the servers back up? This would be like this other school that has COTS. Where those COTS came from, that's part of their disaster recovery plan, they know, "Let's go get COTS, let's go get food, let's bunker down and just start fixing everything." Business continuity is going to be keeping things going from day-to-day. How do we keep the phones up? We need the phones immediately, that's going to be step one, let's have that communication between buildings, how do we do that? And writing that all down is step one, we have to get all of our, all of our pieces together, know what we have, know what we need to move forward. We're also planning a cybersecurity awareness month where we're going to hit passwords, we're going to hit phishing again, we're going to hit various other things that will be surprises to our staff that are in this room, so be looking forward to that. And you see this guy hack, this hacker up in the corner, it's always in the movies, it's always a guy in a dark hoodie, that's not what our hackers look like, our hackers look like this guy right here on a Chromebook. Really, they're not, we have all of these, we have people that tell us, "This student is hacking in my classroom, he's doing something, he's breaking stuff," which is rarely the case. We've been told before that this, this student has compromised the Chromebook, he's got it working however he wants to and he can take over the network. It's not true. Google has a bug bounty program for their Chromebooks and they'll pay tens of thousands of dollars if you report those things. So, people actively try this stuff and they don't do it because they're not getting this money. So, if our students were breaking into machines and compromising Chromebooks, we'd tell them to apply for this and get their tens of thousands of dollars and move on. The last thing we're going to try for is the TLE SEAL, Trusted Learning Environment. This is new within the last few years and it basically sets several benchmarks for us to achieve in five separate domains to ensure the privacy of our student data. We're going to hit this hard, we're going to shoot for this and it's very hard to achieve this seal and that's okay if we don't get it because the path there is going to make us all the better for trying, for putting these things into place. If we hit five domains, if we hit four of the domains and we nail them and they say, "Hey, you failed on the fifth one," we'll work harder and try again the next year. When will we be done with security?
Ever.
Never, will never be done. Again, there is no one tool that can stop us, I'm not going to sit up here and say, "We're going to have the best security and we're bulletproof" because now, now we have a target on our back. We will never be done with security, it will always be on the forefront of our minds and it'll always be something important to us here at UST 290. But why is it super important? And this is kind of interesting, we saw this in Missouri, someone used this exact analogy, you have hospitals right now and you have banks right now that have federally mandated secured networks that are tested all of the time. There are all kinds of tests and certifications that they are required to have to ensure that all the data is safe on both of their networks. We, we don't have those requirements, we have, we have some legislation in place that says this is what's important, but there's nothing that says you have to pass this test before you have X, Y, and Z on your network. And interestingly enough, we provide the most data arguably to both of those entities and it's the data that they want to get out of the banks and hospitals that we're just sending to them. So, we are a source of this information and we're an easier source. And as you see the news lately, we're getting picked off one by one by one by one. Louisiana had a cybersecurity incident and they declared a statewide emergency declaration and they mobilized resources to help school districts. I think three of them got hit and that was enough to trigger this statewide emergency. We're up to two in the last week. Here's their emergency declaration, this was a month ago. So, how can our department add this to our plate? We can't, we, we really can't. What we can do is we have a position that was vacated this last summer, this summer and our idea would be to bring someone in to fill that position, that part-time does this and then the rest of the time does all the rest of the duties of our district technicians. There, there's just so much going on in the world of security that it's, we can no longer sit idly by and try to work harder than these people that sit at home all day trying to get into our network. It is an incredible task. Any questions, concerns, there should be concerns, any questions?
This is like listening to the audio version of The Girl with the Dragon Tattoo.
That sold really well, by the way, so congratulations.
Wow.
It's, it's really scary, we saw the smallest of the small schools in Missouri telling us about their information security teams. And I think it's, it's about time something in Kansas changes where we reprioritize cybersecurity.
Is there, is that a possibility?
Certainly is.
Are people lobbying for that?
There are things in motion, mainly the, the data security agreement part. It's, it's a small piece, but the fact that they're looking at that now, I think it's going to take a coordinated effort between schools and the state of Missouri to kind of see what they're doing, maybe.
I would imagine that you will see larger school districts, Wichita, Topeka, Hays, Shawnee Mission, Blue Valley, they will put this in place fairly quickly if it's not already in place. You will see the smaller districts push back based upon allocated resources and where they feel those resources are best suited. And ultimately, that will be the risk that they inherently take by making those decisions.
And it's, it's been proven this week a couple of times, it doesn't matter how big you are, still a target. I think part of that urgency thing, the, the target for these hackers or for the schools is that there's an urgent requirement to have everything running this first week of schools, or first week of school. That's why we're seeing this influx of attacks is because the, the attackers envision the schools are more likely to pay this money because they want it to go away because they have 15 things on their plate right now. And people do pay these ransoms in tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's what, I, but I believe it was Turner Medical Center that got hit earlier this week and they paid a ridiculous ransom, I think it was $100,000 to get their data back. They also posted, anyone use Reddit? They posted on Reddit asking for help and said, "How do we recover from this?" And everyone just said, "You don't, you're too far." So, we do have some plans in place that we didn't talk about tonight that are not appropriate for this venue, that will be probably in a future board meeting or a board update about what we have specifically that we want to procure to protect us, an extra layer of that Security Onion. Again, it's not going to make us bulletproof and we can't have that mentality going in anywhere because that's when it hurts the most when you fall. Anything else?
Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you so much, we're glad you are on top of this. Yeah.
Just a depth, isn't it?
All right. Mrs. Whitaker is up next, presenting about the FHTC agreement.
This is really exciting for our students, we have a lot of agreements with different technical colleges and universities and so we were approached by Flint Hills Technical College. They came and met with us and they examined all the pathways that we offered and looked at what Neoshaw Community College can offer our students and the things that they couldn't offer our students, they were willing to come to the table and see what we can do. The best part about these credits that our students can earn in these courses is free for them. And so, all of our, all our students have to do are they'll be enrolled in these courses with our instructors. Our instructors have a mentor teacher at Flint Hills Technical College, they work with them, they do the things that they need to do and at the end of the course, if our students pass, we turn those names into Flint Hills Technical College and they will receive college credit for these courses. And so, they go directly to Flint Hills Technical College as well as Flint Hills Technical College. Another neat thing about them is they are constantly working on two-for, two-for-three programs and different things with K-State and other universities and so our students would be able to take these credits other places with them to further their knowledge in the area that they are best interested in. So, the ones that are, I can't read those, I think the ones that are read it out are the ones that we could not partner with. And then, all of the ones that are listed in the white, the digital media, the photo imaging, should be some mechanic courses, our health science one and our culinary one course, we are able to partner with Flint Hills Technical College on. So, really excited about this opportunity for our kids, especially with that word "free." And, and along these lines goes with one of our big goals this year in kind of moving Stella into her new role as career counselor, is we have to do a better job of educating not only our students but our parents on these opportunities because our kids are sitting in classes and we have these agreements with different universities and our students, especially our parents, just don't realize it nor do they understand. And so, that's a big push that we have this year, working with our students in our media classes to create short videos and different things that we can be putting on the website to ensure that our families know about these opportunities that our students have.
So, one of the things to, to mention here is over the course of the years, we have entered into a number of agreements, articulation agreements with Neoshaw County Community College, with Butler Community College, we go on and on with a number of different post-secondary institutions that we've partnered with. But part of the issue with partnering with them is that you may have to complete an entire pathway to receive credit for one course and you only receive that course upon enrollment in that institution. So, an articulation with Butler means that you're going to finish an entire pathway and then you might get an introductory course knocked off your transcript if you enroll at Butler. The beauty of Flint Hills is that all of these courses are high school courses that because our courses are, are as rigorous and meet the requirements that they do, they also meet the post-secondary requirements. So, it's not like, we don't have kids giving up the opportunity to explore at the high school level to go into post-secondary courses. This is a high school level course that because it meets the requirements of a post-secondary course, they receive credits for both. And I think that is important for us to recognize here, that we're not asking kids to give up the opportunity for exploration. They can continue to explore and go through these different programs and then get credit for each course that they pass within the program, not through an articulation, but a true college credit at no cost to them.
The other thing we've learned about Flint Hills Technical College is that they are going to start offering a series of opportunities online, one of which would be the beginnings of a dental hygiene, hygienist degree. And the thing that I've learned recently is that online classes are kind of open territory. Right now, if we're teaching a course with our instructors and we're trying to partner with a college, then we really have to go through Neoshaw Community College as our first resort. If they can't offer the credit for our students or give us what we need, we can seek out other entities. But the online courses are kind of, they're open, they're free rein and so we're really excited to talk with Flint Hills and see what some of the opportunities they can offer our kids. A lot of kids go to college, when we talk to stu, even students who just graduated, they're like, "Ms. Whitaker, I have 14 credit hours, but six of them are actually online and I'm living at K-State." And so, that's the platform that more of our, most, more and more of our post-secondary schools are going to, kind of a blended model. And so, we'll continue to partner with Flint Hills and come to you all when they have unique opportunities for our students to kind of dive deeper into some of our pathways or just enhance their learning while they're still in our building before they get out to the real world.
I'd like to see maybe eventually that we get some more of the trades in there because I know we've talked welding before with Neoshaw and...
Yes.
Couldn't ever get that aligned or whatever. It'd be nice to see eventually if we couldn't, with the new welding, everything we have in that area now, be able to use it.
Yeah, because we partner with Neoshaw Community College right now with the welding one and then if we have students who start their junior, they can kind of continue on with those certificates. And, and some of the ones that you'll see blacked out are like ag welding. We had some conversation with Flint Hills Technical College and Kim, the lady who I've been working with, has come back to Neoshaw Community College because ag welding is different than the welding that our students are sitting in when they take that course through our Neoshaw Community College partnership. So, she is still having some conversation, we're going back over some of the read it out courses because some of it is Neoshaw offers it at their Salina campus, but they don't necessarily offer it here. And they just have more rigorous requirements for our staff members than Flint Hills does currently.
So, I was just saying, like, if we get more...
Absolutely.
I'm just using welding as an example, but...
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so, one of the things that's important to recognize and one, it looks like electrical is coming, it looks like we're going to have...
That's what I was going to say, if I can say that.
Some evening courses that's coming and I think plumbing is right behind it.
Yeah.
One of the frustrations I think that we have is that there is a state law or mandate that requires any other post-secondary institution to go through Neoshaw County to gain approval for any course that they offer. So, even if we didn't have a welding program, if Neoshaw County offered it, they could deny any other post-secondary institution from coming into our building and providing it. So, this is again, a delicate balance that we have to work with, with post-secondary institutions and it's part of the reason why it's taken us as long to get through this with Flint Hills Tech as it has. But I think every new opportunity that we have certainly enhances the, the programming that we provide at Ottawa High School for our students to, to experience different pathways and different courses. We'll continue to expand those, but sometimes it's easier said than done when we think we have a great opportunity on the table and then low and behold, we get a call from Dr. M. Body telling us that we've, we've broken the law.
Overstep. But electrical, we are going to be offering some evening courses second semester through Neoshaw Community College. And then, the other thing that we are committed to figure out a plan for is our building trades program, how can we work to get that back? That's, there's a lot of moving pieces there. There's a lot of moving pieces there. Mr. Kochic, our teacher, is very excited about the possibility of getting that program back. We just kind of got to figure out logistically with the number of staff members we have, how can we make that work for our kids? So, those are definitely, Chris, I appreciate that you bring that up, looking at those trades is something that we need to continue to dive into.
A little bit passionate about it.
You might be, absolutely, and we appreciate that. But no, and I know that, so, Neosho's committed to the electrical second semester, and then they are still looking at the plumbing. We've had conversations, we just don't have anything kind of firmed up whether they're comfortable and ready to offer that yet. Okay, any questions?
Do you have one question?
Yeah.
Why is there a difference where there is no fee with Flint Hills, but Neosho still has the $20 per credit hour fee? Why is that?
Is that with the...
Yeah, okay, so, there's a difference between career and technical education courses. They are not covered, none of the CTE courses are covered under the C-3 agreement. None of our students that take a CTE course through Neosho County or Flint Hills pay anything to take those courses, the state pays for it. So, an example would be when we had accounting at OHS. Accounting was a CTE identified course, they shouldn't pay any enrollment to take those courses. Now, with welding, there are fees associated, where you pay gas fees, you pay whatever fees. But the enrollment cost is free. So that's why with Flint Hills, the state provides Flint Hills Tech and Neosho County an amount of money for every student that they have enrolled. They then utilize that money to fund it through us. So whatever money they gain off of our students, we see 50% of that, and they pay our teachers on top of it.
Yep. And so the English courses and things don't fall in that category.
Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, good question.
And another question, you said, they all have to go through Neosho Community College?
Yep.
Yes.
Why do they have...
Because they are, what do they call it, like, your neighborhood community college, and so since if they can offer it to your students or your faculty, then that is the first, our first stop. And then if they can offer something, and maybe Flint Hills comes in with something better, somebody like Kim calls them and has the conversation, is kind of acts as a liaison between us, and then they either give us the red light or the green light on it.
So this is a state, is a state barrier put in to protect community colleges from being pirated by other community colleges?
That's because they're in our community, and...
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
But then it's not, it's statewide blanket.
Yes, no, not just Neosho, it's because they're our local community.
Like, every high school's assigned, even if your Allen County's close to you, but it's two hours away, that might be your local community college, and you would have to go through them first to offer different opportunities for your students. So, and we have a good relationship with them, and we're continuing to strengthen it and find just different opportunities and different ways that we can work with Neosho Community College and other institutions to provide our students what they need.
Very good.
Is there a motion to approve the courses introduced for the dual credit with Flint Hills Technical College?
So move.
Is there a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0. And we are on to robotics at OHS. Mrs. Whitaker and Mrs. Steinball?
Robotics after the security, though. I'm asking you guys to give us permission to arm our students with some knowledge, maybe, here. But I have with me Amanda Steinball, and she is a new teacher to Ottawa High School. She is going to be in our science department, mainly teaching our biology courses. She's also bringing college biology back to Ottawa High School, we're really excited about that, and our aviation. In her past experience, she taught some drone classes and some different engineering things and some pathways. So when I, when we hired Amanda and she took the job, one thing she came to me about was robotics. She's very passionate about it, started a robotics team at her other school, and knowing that we have our maker spaces in our elementary buildings, we've got a robotics club at the middle school, and we kind of didn't have anything for the students once they get over to the high school. We were super excited and really wanted to entertain this notion. And so we met with a gentleman from First Robotics, he came in and kind of just gave us an overlay of what it is. I will be upfront, it's a little bit of a pricey opportunity for our students, but I think the things that they can gain from being a part of a club like robotics really outweigh the cost. There's a lot of things associated with this, being a new robotics club, if we were able to do this, we can get a rookie grant, and that would be anywhere from $1,000 to $4,000 that they would give us to kind of get started. There are different things, like I've been working with Dean to find out if we had some laptops and things around that we could utilize, just to kind of get the kids started. We also can get a, what did he call that kit? Was it a rookie kit as well? So they would give us a rookie kit, which would be some basic parts and different things that Amanda can use with the kids to get them started in building this robot. I'm going to let her go through just a couple slides that give you a little bit of information about it. We do have a three-minute video, but it really gives you a really solid overview for what First Robotics is.
Oh, here's a clicker. Oh, thank you. Well, like Ms. Whitaker said, my name's Amanda Steinball, and I thank her for letting me have this opportunity, but I do have to correct her, I did not start the robotics team at Central Heights. I did inherit the team, but I was their coach for the last three years. So I have learned a little bit along the way, but there's always more learning to do. Is it just... There we go. Thank you. So, if you're not aware of what First Robotics is, it is a very competitive environment for students to apply their technical skills to. It's not like going out and playing a basketball game. Instead of using a physical exertion, you're using your mental exertion. So if you look underneath the word, it says challenging, that is a quote from First, it is the hardest fun you'll ever have, and I can absolutely speak to that. The dedication and time that goes into this is wonderful, and sometimes extreme, but the, like Ms. Whitaker said, the benefits that the students get are astronomical. There are, I was told that there might be some questions on what kind of students this may affect, and just please be aware that First Robotics is absolutely available to every student in the school. There is no cap on the size of your team, there is a minimum, though, it does have to take five students, and that's all it takes to have a First Robotics team. At the highest years at Central Heights that I had, I had 42 students on the robotics team. So, with that, I want to kind of move to the all-encompassing. And the reason I can have 42 students on a robotics team is because not everybody gets to build the robot, not everybody wants to build the robot. There's lots of different areas that go into robotics, and there's finances, graphic design, community relations, and then there's the actual competition of, you know, driving the robot, there's programming the robot, the mechanical side of that. So there's lots of different faucets that students can dive into. So if they don't ever want to touch a screwdriver, they don't have to, but if that's what they desire to do, then absolutely. So just be aware that, I mean, you can have huge teams, and I've competed against teams that are 300-plus members on their team, and it's because there's all of those different areas that students can work in. So a couple basics about the team, like I had mentioned, you have to have at least a minimum of five students, and two adult mentors, and they call mentors, it's not, well, there's, they can consider those your coaches, but then the mentors are from the community and parents, people who have specific knowledge in areas like electrical, or maybe it's in welding, which I'm not great at, but I can attempt it at least. There's also, you know, graphic design, or web create, you know, webpage creation, finances, things like that. So you're going to reach out to lots of people with the knowledge in those areas in order to better your team and to teach the students the best, because me, as a coach, I don't have all of that knowledge that would be necessary, so I do rely highly on mentors. Then, something basically the school would need to provide would be a suitable meeting place. When I say meeting place, it'd be like a build room, computers, like Ms. Whitaker had mentioned, you know, basic tools, metal, things like that. So overall, the technical season for robotics is January through April. However, be aware that there are some preseason things that have to occur before you can go to competition, like the webpage, like making t-shirts, and getting money, and things like that. So all of that has to occur prior to January. So, that's why I've put September through April, that's typically what I had worked with on my previous team. And then it's about 15 to 20 hours per week, and a lot of that does occur after hours and on weekends. Basically, I think you guys can probably assume the things that the students are going to get, but something I do want to touch on is that being a partner or a team through First Robotics, the students have exclusive rights to some of those $80 million in scholarships that typical students aren't able to apply for. A lot of those scholarships are very easy to get. For example, there's a brand of belt that you can run on your robot, it's called Garner. And if you use a Garner belt on your robot, the students can apply for a $300 scholarship, just because you have their brand on your robot. So I mean, some of them are very simple to get, some of them are very extensive and hard to get, but it depends on, you know, how much work a student wants to put into that, but that's even more dollars for college that they would have available to them. And then lastly, just like all schools, you want to have good community involvement, and this is just one more way that we can tie the community back into our school. And then in addition, give back to the community, too, because in previous years, I, my team and I, we did summer workshops for free at the local libraries, we got the kids and younger kids involved in robotics, and different various activities around the community. So, you definitely want to get your kids out there and show off their knowledge. So if you don't mind, I would like to show you the three-minute video, and then I'll take questions at the end.
Hey, don't click on the wrong thing.
Are you opening this up to Tunisia?
I hope not.
You want me to get a tech aid? Wait, is that you saying you're in, or was that Shawnee?
Is the world's landmark robotics competition for students.
In school, you read about stuff, but in First as a whole, you actually go and do it.
Beginning of January, the challenge comes out every year. Under strict rules and limited time and resources, you have to design, build, program, and test a robot.
There's no blueprint. We get a few rules and guidelines to follow, and then it's up to those students to find something that works.
There's nothing better than just seeing your robot on the field, playing for the first time. They're all there like, "Is it going to work? Is it going to work?" No, no, it works, it's the best feeling ever.
You have mentors that are actually in the field that can tell you, "Oh, this is why this works," and this is the science behind it, and you're like, "Oh, wow, that makes so much sense."
They do a great job, not just about STEM, but about life, you know, how to go through college, how to go through, you know, a tough, you know, business class.
At face value, First Robotics Competition is a robot competition, but at the end of the day, it's so much more than that.
People ask me, like, "Oh, you build robots?" I says, "No, it's, we're really running a business, and all the things that go along with that."
We deal with a lot of marketing, social media.
I've learned business sides of things.
Problem solving, working in groups.
I'm learning how to communicate with people, how to reach out to local businesses.
So we kind of have robotics as the starting point, but we branch out to different areas and expand.
So the ultimate goal every year is always to get to the First Championship.
The First Championship is basically like the Olympic for robots.
There's hundreds of teams from all over the world there, and you get to see some of the best teams that exist.
It's very competitive, but you're friends with the people that you're going against. It's like a sport, but in its own way, it's better than a sport.
Being part of First has really changed my life, and, you know, how I think about myself, how I think about others.
Participating in First actually taught me that I'm capable of doing anything that I set my mind to.
First has really inspired me to give back. My old elementary school, I'm trying to help their robotics program that just started this year. I want those kids to have the opportunity to learn about STEM.
As a participant in the First program in high school, you get access to $80 million worth of scholarships.
There are scholarships for colleges, universities, as well as technical programs.
It also looks really good on the actual application to be on First.
First does a really great job trying to open programs to make sure that you can actually accomplish anything in STEM, no matter where you're from, your background, your language, or anything like that.
I really do consider myself part of the STEM community, and I couldn't be more proud to say that.
First Robotics Competition is one of four engaging First programs that shows students unique challenges and helps them learn new engineering skills and real-world skills that'll help them in the future.
First is the future.
First is accomplishment.
First is passion.
First is inspiring.
First is changing my story.
And so what you saw there is the little playing field that the kids get in January, and they get, they'll know what the playing field looks like, and then they have to build a robot to get it to accomplish the task. We would love if we were able to have this opportunity to have our students go to one regional competition, at least one regional competition this year. We are lucky, in this portion of Kansas, there are several, usually Olahtha, one of the Olahtha schools host one, so there is one in a good distance. And then if the kids ever were to qualify, there is a world, and typically that's held somewhere in Texas, is what the gentleman, the director, had told us. And so, any questions about First Robotics?
You know, I think this is actually a very cool opportunity for our kids. I had several youth from my church up in Olahtha that went through this program in their district up there, and just did phenomenal things. So I'm looking forward to it.
Likewise, I had a nephew that got through robotics and got a job with Mercedes-Benz because of the robotics, so I'm on board, absolutely. Thank you for championing this and bringing it forward.
And one of the neat, oh, go ahead, Jenda.
Oh, I just echo what Harold, and this is exciting. Can't wait to hear more and see...
And we really think this can encompass a lot of our pathway students, right? There's a lot of different students and teachers that hopefully can get engaged and get involved in this, and it could really turn out to be something really cool for our school, that a lot of our students that have a variety of backgrounds are participating in. Hi, well, thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks. All right, we are down to board reports, which you notice I am not skipping over this week. Does anybody have anything to report?
Last, yeah, last Thursday, I went to a roundtable discussion of several school districts up in Topeka at the KASB office. Always good to hear what's going on in other districts, what their issues are, just, it was good. It was literally a roundtable discussion, there were seven of us from seven different school districts, and it was worth the drive to go up and participate in that. And it was also good to meet the new teachers last week at the luncheon. It's always exciting to see who our new faculty is. And, there's something else, but I forgot.
Harold, did you have something?
Good breakfast this morning, good to see the energy back in OMS with the teachers, faculty, staff. Yeah, good time.
Absolutely. I went as part of the Kansas Leadership Program to Coffeyville last month, and got to see some other school district, some of the things that they were doing for some of these areas that the state is really looking at as far as growth and some of the use of funds. So, after I have my last travel one, which will be going to Garden City next month, and after that is all finished, I'll put together a little presentation for you guys to kind of fill you in on some of the things that I've learned.
Garden City, yeah.
Want to ride along here?
They send you...
Take a district plane.
All right, well, we will move on to negotiations, and we do need an executive session for that this evening, I think probably about 20 minutes, and we do need to invite Dr. Cobb's with us.
And Mr. Robinson as well.
Okay.
And Mrs. Bybee as well.
All right.
She's not on the negotiating team.
No, but she's there, observing.
All right, so if somebody could read that recommended action, including those two folks.
Okay, she didn't want to go. Madam President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss teacher negotiations pursuant to the expectation for employer-employee negotiations under coma, and that the open meeting shall resume at, let's say, 8:25 in the boardroom.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0. And again, we need to include Dr. Cobb's and Mr. Robinson. If somebody would like to read the statement again?
Oh, we have to read the whole statement again?
We do. We do. I failed to do that in the past, but yes, we do.
Madam President. I move that the board go into executive session to discuss teacher negotiations pursuant to the ex, what, exception for employer-employee negotiations under coma and that the open meeting shall resume at 8:45 in the boardroom.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0. And then, there were three. Oh, Josh is still here, so that's four. All right. Is there a motion to return back to open session?
So moved.